Monday, November something. Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
We're still in November. It feels like January. It's November. But it's okay. Um, it is 7:01, and this is the regular meeting of the Columbus School Board. Um, so now that they've called us to order, Mary, can you take the roll?
Barb's not here. Barb Hasselberg is not here as of right now. Okay. Um, Julie Haduski is here. Michael Bryan.
Here.
Cindy Damm.
Yep.
Bill Braun.
Yeah.
Kelly Crumbie.
Yeah.
And I'm here.
Are you sure you're here?
I'm...
She's partially here.
Just asking. Um, all right, so there is six of s- there are six of seven of us present, so we do have a quorum, and can we verify that the meeting's been noticed?
It has.
Awesome. And just a reminder that the work we do tonight is under the district's mission statement that we empower students to be community, career, and college-ready, um, what we know as our ENZ1 mission statement. As I load my email here. It's working. It's working. It's coming up. Um, okay, do Net have any requests for revisions to the agenda? Uh, so I'm looking for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to, oh, I'm not on, sorry. I make a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
Second.
Motion by Julie, a second by Mike, to approve the agenda as posted. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, public conversation, recognitions, and correspondence. Um, we have a number of donations tonight that are still coming up. So I'm gonna go off of the agenda. Um, we have four donations for Community Giving Back Night, um, some handmade hats from Harold Moylan, uh, $300 from Matt Faust, $300 from Oddfellows, and $1,000 from Drexel, um, all for our Community Giving Back Night. And, uh, we have, um, a donation of picture frames for the CHS Art Department from Bob O'Brien, photographer in town. Um, so, uh, thank you to all of them for their generosity. Um, and I'm really impressed and want to acknowledge again everybody who's donated to our Community Giving Back Night, as well as the fall one for students. Um, the community response for these events has really been phenomenal. Um, people want to contribute. They wanna contribute time, talent, um, financial, um, you know, material donations, what have you, and I am just, um, so impressed with the community support we've got, um, for this. So, um, December 11th at the middle school?
Correct. December 11th at the middle school from 4:00 to 7:00. Um, any families who would like to participate? We are going to, it's gonna be a little bit different than the fall one. Um, it's gonna be set up kind of in shops, so they can come and, uh, participate as families. So there's going to be a salon, like we had last time. We have, I believe it's four stylists that are participating for the haircuts. Um, we have a shop where they can go and, um, receive mittens and socks, or mittens and hats, and, um, and we also have, um, a shop where they can go and, uh, pick out warm winter clothing. So there's gonna be boots, coats. Um, we're accepting donations for those next week, um, at the middle school. And also on Saturday, I believe it is the 10th, I'm probably getting my days wrong, but it's Saturday, the second Saturday, um, where we're accepting the donations for winter clothing. Um, PTO is helping us with that, um, folding the clothes and getting that all set up. Um, and so it can't be the 10th because the event is the 11th and that's a Tuesday.
It's the 8th.
Thank you, the 8th. Um, I just realized that as it was getting in my head. Um, we are also doing, um, we're allowing, so you see the monetary donations, and what we're doing is something a little bit different. So we're, we're really working to try and teach the, um, children that it's, um, as nice to give as it is to receive. And so the monetary do- donations that you see is that the children are gonna get to go shopping for two important people in their lives, and so they're just really small tokens, but they're gonna be able to go and pick out two gifts for people in their lives that mean something to them. Um, and so they get to go through the shop and, and be able to give to two people that mean something to them in their lives. So there's our little shop that they're gonna be able to do, and so that's what the monetary donations are for. So it's really set up in little shops that the families get to go through, um, and, um, we're really looking forward to, uh, the evening. A lot of people have stepped up to help, and so we're really excited about the, the evening. December 11th, 4:00 to 7:00 at the middle school.
Fantastic. Um, any other public conversation recognitions we have? Nope. Right. Hearing none, we will move into showcasing successes.
Okay, so at the first meeting of, um, second meeting of every month, uh, we do our showcasing successes, and this month, um, we actually have had this one in mind for quite some time. Um, Jake Eckern let me know, uh, that for the third year in a row, our Columbus High School Yearbook has received the Jostens National Yearbook Program of Excellence Award. Um, he let me know this quite a while ago, and so when we decided we were going to do the showcasing successes, we put them on the slate, if you will, the calendar, that we are gonna have them be our showcasing successes, award winners, if you will, for December. We're gonna recognize them in December. So Jake is gonna give a little bit of an introduction, and then we'll have them present.
All right, like, um, Annette said, this is the third year that they, um, did get this award. Um, I know our yearbook staff and, um, their advisor, Ms. Schwerer, work really, really hard, uh, putting the yearbook together. Um, it's something that they work on all year long, and they, um, really, really try to get as many students in there as many times as possible. So you'll see 'em between classes, kinda during their ti- during their time off, um, during study halls, at night, um, running around, taking pictures at events of, you know, kinda random shots in the library, in the hallway, uh, really trying to, like I said, make a really concerted effort to get as many people involved, uh, in the yearbook, which is a really, which is really nice to see, and I know you guys all got a chance to take a look at last year's yearbook, and, you know, every year I go, man, this is a, it's a really good yearbook. There's no way they're gonna do better than that next year, and sure enough, the next year they do better than they did the year before. So it's, it's really cool to see, um, our students take a real active interest in, um, making the yearbook as, as, really as neat as it can be, and I said it's a, the students get an opportunity to make the covers, um, and I don't wanna take too much, I don't know what they're gonna talk about completely, but I don't wanna take away too much of their thunder, but, uh, we do have a couple people here tonight that I'd like to introduce, and they'll talk a little bit about, um, the yearbook and kinda what they do and how they go about things, and, um, we've got Ms. Jolene Schwerer, who's our yearbook advisor, and our high school art teacher, and Karina Larson and Addie Vick, who, uh, work really, really hard on our yearbook. So without further ado, I'll have them come on up.
Um, so just a little bit of background on the award. Um, this is, uh, Jostens is a national yearbook company, and, um, what they do is they, they keep track of like data from, um, our yearbook software, and then, uh, we have to report on some things we're doing throughout the year. Um, and then that determines whether or not they get that recognition every year. So, um, only about 3% of schools nationwide earn that recognition, and to do it three years in a row is really impressive, so I'm really proud of these guys. And they're gonna tell you about our book, which is called The Cardinal.
Jostens gives us a criteria to meet: a meaningful book for all students, a book in every student's hands, and effective product management. And there, there's an example of what the page actually looks like in our, in our eyes, and it shows like the coverage report, the goal sales, and the, whatever the last one is, the events, I think.
Um, so one of our criteria was a meaningful book for all students. We always have a custom cover designed by one of our CHS students. In the picture, you'll see Michaela Armita- or Michaela Dros with her cus- with her cover from last year, and I believe she did the one before that. And then we also have our What's Trending page, which shows students from our school and different trending items that they either wear, or do, or different sayings. Then we also do a lot of surveys, such as the Theme Day Survey, which we've, uh, asked students, what was their favorite day during homecoming, and we'll plan to do that again this year. And then also on the screen, you'll see our coverage report, which shows what students are in the books and how many times they're in the book, so we can try to get as much coverage of all the students in our school as possible. We also do a lot of marketing campaigns, such as you'll see our Pot of Gold, which we put out on St. Patrick's Day. It had a huge rainbow spanning across the hallway and on top of the ceiling, and then there was little Pot of Gold stickers that you could pull off, and it would show information about how to get your yearbook. We also put out yearbook flyers, which if you have a student, you have definitely seen one before. Um, and then we also have yearbook chalk every year, which we just draw like outside by the bus lines, and as soon as you get out of the school, you'll see it. Honestly, if you, like I said, if you have a student, if you haven't seen a yearbook flyer or yearbook advertising, then you probably live under a rock. Uh, we also have very effective product management. We met all our deadlines last year, which was 112 pages, all submitted on time, and we attend as many events as possible, such as sports or club activities, to get quality photos, and we do weekly book critiques on Fridays to check progress and give feedback to our staffers, and we follow through on all of our page assignments. You can see up there our senior wall, where we try to get out, um, what seniors have already turned in their pictures and to get them to turn in more, and you also see our seniors' plurative, uh, where we started a photo shoot to get another quality page that shows our students. And that's all.
Awesome. Um, so, does that put me at Mary now? Six years? I think it's been six years now in a row of high school yearbooks, and these last three have really been, um, they deserve the recognition that they've gotten. They're fantastic. Um, they're just, they're nice. The world of templates, I was telling Annette, I think I'd have liked, um, the whole concept of helping with yearbook a lot more if it was back in the world of digital and templates and easy cropping and things when I was in high school. Um, so I know that gives you lots of options, um, to make sure that we have all students pictured in there, um, and, and, uh, group activity photos, but it just really is, it's impressive. When that senior, um, proof came home, I was like, wow, that's really awesome stuff. It's a little bit of work to make sure that I submitted a baby picture promptly, um, 'cause of course that wasn't in digital format, but, um, it really is just, all three of them have been very, very impressive, so. Um, questions for Jolene and our yearbook staff? Kelly?
How much does the yearbook cost?
At the moment, it costs $43, but after December, I believe, it'll cost $45.
Bill?
Can you, can you tell me again the name of the, of the kid who designed the cover? 'Cause I just think it's great.
Michaela Dros.
Oh, and she was a senior last year, right?
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, great, great book. Really enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Well, I, I was just gonna say, uh, first to the girls of, of high school, uh, neat ideas, and I don't think people appreciate, as Mr. Eckern said, the time commitment, and it's not during school time necessarily at all that that's gonna happen, in terms of that. The other thing I think we should recognize, uh, Mrs. Schwerer, your 15th year teaching at Columbus High School, uh, you've been very active in a lot of art, different related topics, and this is your fourth year as yearbook advisor, and I want people, Columbus people, to know too, parents, students, et cetera, Mrs. Schwerer is an example of a Columbus High School graduate that came back to be a part of our high schools, I don't care if it's high school, or grade school, or middle school. She's an important part of the Columbus education system.
I'm gonna date myself, but I was on the yearbook, uh, committee once upon a time, and, and we had to run all the photos through this little machine that put wax on the back of 'em, and then stick 'em onto this special graph-like paper, and then like mail them in these big folders. Anyway, um, it's awesome. It's a really nice book, the one that you brought for us as example, so thank you to bring that, because I have elementary kids' schools in school here, so I wouldn't have forgotten to see that yet. I see there's a bunch of sponsors in the back. Do they help offset the cost for our students? Great, great, excellent. Thank you. Barb?
Yes, I love Jolene, so, we go way back, and we just do a great job. We always have.
Jolene, how many of your students are, 'cause this is a, we take this as a skinny course, right?
Yep.
Is that still the, it's still a skinny? So how many students do you have on your staff who repeat, or are able to come back or do, and then do you have to be in yearbook, um, as a course in order to be on yearbook staff?
Sure. Okay, um, so this year, uh, was the first year since I've been at CHS where yearbook has been, um, to capacity as the skinny class. Um, so, uh, there was, um, there's three students that are repeating right now in a leadership role. So for example, um, Karina's back as one of our editors this year, Sam Lambert's an editor, and then there's another student doing a second year with the program. Um, but students are also able to do yearbook support this year, so people that still wanted to stay involved with it, um, and do like event photography, or it's just something they're very passionate about, can still stay involved with that during the intervention enrichment block.
So from...
And I think I answered. But yeah, we have about 25 students on staff.
So from a production standpoint, you have a new, a lot, a large number of new students putting this together every year.
Yep.
Um, which makes the recognition even really more amazing, um, because then we have, you've got a great system of making sure everything is done, um, and improving on those steps the next year, so that those new students, um, can complete at the same level they did last year.
Yeah, it definitely helps that the district is supporting us with the Adobe Suite, so we can use Photoshop in our classes, because they're using not only in my classes, but, um, through the STEM program, um, tech ed, and in my regular art classes too. So that's been nice, just to, the learning students are doing throughout their different classes and applying that in different areas.
Awesome.
Good.
Awesome. Great stuff, guys. Any other questions or comments for our yearbook?
I've got one. Where is Jostens located?
Our rep comes from like Germantown or something, but, um, the company is in Illinois and the factory's down south.
Because the list of schools that got recognized, I mean, it's a couple pages long, but if you look at the Wisconsin group, it seems to be overwhelming. It's a lot larger than any other state represented. Are we, are we more creative here, or what?
Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot.
Good work, guys. Yeah, you don't get to keep these guys, sorry. All right. Moving on to board business. All right, first up in your packet, we have the summary of, um, spring election information. Mary and Mike are, um, up for reelection in the spring. This is our, one of our years that we have, um, two. It's a rotation of two candid- two board members, two board members, and then three is the rotation on that, so we're on a two-seat rotation this year. Um, and I think Pam left you your, uh, paperwork, um, to file candidacy or non-candidacy that's due by December 21st. Um, and we have our deadlines here. Uh, anybody who's interested in running for school board have until 5:00 on Wednesday, January 2nd, to, um, stop at district office and complete that paperwork. Um, Pam has that available. Um, you don't need signatures or anything. It's a pretty simple form to complete. Um, but you'll wanna bring your ID with you to access the building during business hours. Um, it's not necessarily a requirement for the election paperwork. It is a requirement to be a guest in our buildings. Questions, comments? If there's, uh, more than four people, uh, running, we'll have a primary in February, uh, 'cause we can only take two candidates per open seat to the general election in April. So, there's your quick crash course on spring election. Questions, comments? I think I hit the key points on that, and we'll talk about it again. Is it closer? All right, moving on to our E2 Fine Arts Monitoring Reports. That's all yours.
Okay. Um, we are bringing to the board, um, for this month, a couple of reports that are actually due in December, but because we have only one meeting in December, um, and that meeting is also going to be quite lengthy, so we're s- bringing to you a couple of ENZ reports and an EL for this meeting, so that we can fit everything in on that one b- board meeting in December. So tonight we have an E2 Fine Arts and an E2 Physical Education, and Becky is gonna be, um, giving you some highlights of both of those reports. Um, and so Becky, if you would please, we'll start with the E2 Fine Arts.
Okay. So just as a quick reminder for the board, when we're talking about our Fine Arts report, it's referring specifically to our art and music departments in the district. Just a couple things to draw your attention to with this report. Um, the first two indicators, um, really are the, the proof of the coursework that our students are able to do, and the variety that happens at the, the different level. Um, indicator three, this is another one of those where, when you look at the 2016-17 and the 2017-18 data, there is a significant difference. It is correct. Um, in our, in our graduation requirements, um, we require students to obtain a half-credit in fine arts in or, in order to earn a diploma from Columbus High School, and so this percentage represents the number of students from those particular graduating classes that exceeded, um, and took more than a half-credit in either art, music, or a combination of the two. And so there was a really, really nice, significant jump, but that really represented the interest of the students from the class of 2018. Um, and then on indicator five, this is an indicator that, um, talks about solo and ensemble, which is something that students who are in our choir or our band, um, will opt into every year. It is something that students are able to participate in, beginning in grade seven and goes all the way through high school. Um, the numbers, we had nice significance. So for these numbers, it is relied upon both the, first of all, the number of students that are in the courses, and then the participation that goes on. So last year there were 27, um, soloists that earned a one or higher. Um, with solos, what that means is it's just, well, I mean, a solo is one student participating, um, versus the ensembles, where the number is lower, but the number of students that are in ensembles could actually represent a really hefty size of the student body who are in music classes, because ensemble would be group events. And then earning a one or higher, there's different classes that, so classes would represent, uh, levels of difficulty that students are able to, able to perform at. Um, the one is the high level, um, awarded by the judges, regardless what class a student is in. Mr. Meinholdts would like me to also, um, just help with further understanding of Class A, which is the most difficult, um, level in solo and ensemble. If students get a one star, that also qualifies a student to go on for state competition. But for our indicator, we focused right at that level one, and so that gives us a consistent standard, whether we're looking at a seventh grader or a senior. Um, so this is a pretty quick report. Do you have any questions?
Kelly, Bill, anything? Mary? Mike?
No, I mean, you're hap- you're happier with everything's, I mean, going on there?
Our students are participating at really nice levels, and I think the success that they're showing is also really nice.
Good, okay.
I have one question.
Mm-hmm.
What percentage of our students participating in music participate in solo ensemble?
That is a number I...
Don't have.
Do, do not have right now.
I'm just, I just see that all of our indicators are specifically related to solo ensemble for the music portion of things.
And actually, those numbers could be different as well, because they can actually register and participate. Well, they have to register through school, but they could participate on their own. Like they, it's not required that they were particip- participate for school, but they could get their own accompaniment. They could, I mean, they could participate technically all on their own.
Right.
Without being enrolled in music? Is that what you mean?
Correct, correct. Yep, so we wouldn't, if that makes sense. So you don't even have to be in a, a music class of any sort to...
Right.
So you'd have to enroll through the school, but don't have to be in music at all to participate.
Sure. No, I was just trying to get a handle on what percentage of our students this would represent, when thinking about using solo ensemble as an indicator.
Sure.
So, I was just curious.
Yep. Could be something if we wanted to in the future add as an indicator, but we didn't wanna include it because we don't use it as a requirement to be in the class.
Sure.
But we thought it was a good indicator to see how kids are performing.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Okay.
Barb, I think? I'm, I'm thinking along the same lines as Julie, as, you know, th- this is great, but when we start talking remaining steady or increase, um, depending where those trends go, it might be something that we want to break down more, just to better understand, because student interest and same, same thing under indicator three, 84.5% taking those extra credits in fine arts, that's huge. Um, I've no idea if that's, you know, reasonable to maintain that. Um, that's, that's a lot of, you know, if you figure we have 100 kids in a graduating class, wow, that could swing real quick if we have students with a greater interest in STEM. So lean CTE as opposed to, um, art, um, you know, but we'll see where that can, that goes, and we can talk about that more as we follow the reports going forward. Um, I think it's, it's good information, and I'm just wondering if we need that extra step. This is good. And this is, you know, and we know that this is the challenge, is that, you know, it looks great, and then as, as we further develop it, what, you know, what's the appropriate supporting information? So, um, okay, any other questions? And does the board have anything at this point that they wanna suggest for comments in response to the monitoring report that we would document on that front page? All right, I'm gonna throw one out there, and that's simply tying our showcasing success in with this monitoring report. I think Jolene made a great point, is that participation and success of our yearbook staff, um, and the tie-in with coursework coming out of the Career Tech Ed Department, um, has, there's that crossover that has, um, benefited our yearbook coursework and, um, staff accomplishments. Um, so I'd propose that for consideration.
That sounds great.
Is yearbook taken for art credit, or...
It is an art credit, yep. Any opposition to that?
No.
I will draft that, and as you'll see in, uh, EL 13, if you notice, our board comment from last time was, is on that cover sheet, and so I'll get something to Pam, so that this is on our, um, cover sheet for action item next time. Um, we can always add to it, but we'll start with that. I think it's most definitely appropriate to recognize that crossover. I'm done rambling now. Moving on to E2 for FIED and Health.
Okay, so for E2 for FIED and Health, um, the first indicator on here is talking about access to physical education for appropriate number of times per week required by law. I did my best to kinda take it grade by grade, because where the law sits, it does vary in terms of what, um, is required in terms of FIED for an elementary student, a middle school student, and a high school student, and it, it does get complicated. Um, grade six, for example, by law can be looped under the same requirements as grades K5, or when it's in a building where grades seven and eight are, um, we take the option in the law to treat it the same way we would treat the other middle school grades. Um, so that's kind of what that chart is, and the attempt is to explain, um, on the left column what the law would require, and on the right column, what we do in Columbus to meet that law. For indicator two... For indicator two, this indicator talks, or says that a hundred percent of students will have access to at least one standalone health class taught by a licensed health teacher between grades seven and 12. At the time that this indicator was written last year, we were into the school year, and we did not have a standalone health class that was on the Columbus High School coursebook. Students at Columbus, so students have to earn health credit by law between, sometime between grades seven and 12. And at Columbus High School up in, so this year, everything changed, but at last year yet, it was being fulfilled through a course called Freshman Wellness, which has existed at Columbus High School several years. I think it came in with PEP grants years ago. And it was a course where students could earn health and FIAD credit out of that one course. So technically, it was not a standalone course, which is why it's listed as no standalone course for grades nine through 12. That has been changed for this year. There is a standalone health class at Columbus High School taught by a licensed health teacher. And so it's a little bit different in that regard. But also on here, I included numbers of students who participated in an online Odysseyware Health class. Like a lot of our areas, when, we have options for students sometimes. When students, for example, come to Columbus High School not in their freshman year, they don't always want to take health or take freshman wellness with the ninth graders. Sometimes there were schedule conflicts for students who were at Columbus High School in ninth grade that made scheduling into that class difficult. And so we did have a number of students who completed the health requirement for graduation through Odysseyware, which is an online program, which last year Jen Parcham was their teacher for. So physical Columbus teacher, but used the online software in order to meet that requirement. So it's just information that we wanted to, to offer on this indicator in terms of explanation of how students were meeting that requirement. And then also, I wanted to draw your attention over to indicator five. This indicator talks about a hundred percent of students will have opportunity to become certified in CPR, CCR, and AED between grades seven through 12. In 2017-18, there was a law that went into effect that students at some point between these grade levels had to be given instruction in CPR, CCR, and AED. And so in Columbus School District where we meet this requirement again is through the freshman wellness course. So 100% of students who were in ninth grade last year and did earn or did receive the opportunity to become certified. So the law says we need to offer instruction. We offer the opportunity to become certified in Columbus School District. There were also a small percentage of students who were in grade 10. So it totaled out to 5.6% of 10th graders who did complete the freshman wellness course last year as well, either because they were not in Columbus High School in ninth grade and chose to take freshman wellness, or because they were repeating that course. And so I offered that percentage on here as well because it wasn't just ninth graders. And then the assumption from there is that our students have had the opportunity to receive this instruction and certification for years. So grades 11, grades 12, those students would have had those opportunities in freshman wellness when they were ninth grade. But this was a change that went into effect from the law perspective in the 2017-18 school year. And then finally, indicator six talks about the percentage of students in grades four through 12 who qualify for a Presidential Fitness Award. So with this, you'll see depending on the grade levels that are measured, when you look just purely at the grade levels between 16-17 and 17-18, some of those percentages went up, some of those percentages went down. Just as a reminder to the board, when you read just across the grade levels, you're thinking about different students. So students who would have been in grade four in 2016-17 would be your grade five students in 17-18. And so we measured across based just purely on grade levels, but there's also, I think, information that you can learn by looking at the cohort of kids if you do the jump from fourth to fifth and fifth to sixth, looking at them that way. But those, those percentages did vary. Talked to Jason Brunel a little bit about it from the middle school, and what he said is Presidential Fitness really is an opportunity for students to see where they're at and to establish some goals for them. The Presidential Fitness Award itself establishes criteria that students have to meet, several different items that are part of it. But in the greater sense of education, those areas are used to help students set goals in their own fitness. And that is what I'd like to highlight in the FIAD Health Report. Do you have any questions?
Start with Bart. I don't have any questions. Julie?
I only have one. CCR, what does that stand for?
Oh, you were gonna do that to me.
I know CCR, I know AED, I don't know CCR, and it's bugging me.
I am totally blanking on what the acronym stands for, but it's
College and Career Ready
No, no, no.
No.
CCR, it's
Google it.
It's compression only.
Compression only CPR.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All ahead.
You put the nurse at the end.
Did I not know something?
I guess I'd just say it's good to see CPR training in there.
Mary?
Do we know how many kids actually became certified in CPR? I know they were all, you know, they offered the opportunity, but do we know how many took advantage of it?
I don't have the exact, I mean, I don't know the exact number that, that passed their full training. Every student was given the opportunity to. Every student was given the instruction when they went through the freshman wellness class.
Okay, so they all learned how to do it. They just didn't maybe all necessarily get certified.
Right. That's a choice, yeah.
Bill?
In indicator one, it says CSH offers the following physical education courses. What's a cooperative sport?
I'm gonna actually, Jake, explain this one.
Yeah. Bill, we had the presentation from Jaleah Henderson and Jen Parcham about a year ago? Maybe it was two years ago now. Adaptive sports?
Yep. I'm not talking adaptive sports, it says cooperative sports.
Yeah, it's, now it's called cooperative sports.
Well, it changed the name.
It's, I think it's always
I think it's always been titled that. I think it's always been called cooperative sports, but we relate to it as adaptive sports.
Do our stu, okay, that's, that's fine, I know what we're talking about then.
Yep.
On another subject, do our students get credit of any kind for taking co-curricular sports?
No.
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 Okay.
Kelly? Those are fast.
Our stu, am I on? Am I? Are students who had that four-part wellness curriculum, have they all graduated now? We're, we're done?
Yes.
Okay. So it was, I, I don't know how you kept track of it, that was craziness of who's got what math credits, who's got what science credits, and PE was the same way. So the four-parters are out, and now it's this elective bundle
Correct.
That they can work with, freshman wellness plus the elective bundle.
It's not freshman wellness anymore. It's, it's like ninth grade physical education, health, and then all of the courses are listed.
Required freshman PE, and then your options in the elective bundle and PE. How's that? Is a better way to phrase it?
Yeah.
Got it, okay. Just so we're all speaking the same language now. Okay, let's call for questions on PE and health. All right, I'm hearing none. Any reflections, comments for the cover page on this one? This is our first go with the indicators. Any concerns about indicators or clarifications we need to make?
I don't think so. We're just working on those subgroups and, but I think we have that figured out pretty good, so.
It's a process.
It is.
Yes, one comment I have, I was impressed to see that we actually have worked hard to exceed the state minimum requirements where we could. So that, I was impressed to see that when you look at what's required versus what we're doing, for example, like in the six, seven, eights. Once a week is what's required, and we're trying to do every other day, so.
Oh, you mean in time that we're offering?
Yeah.
Minutes that we're offering?
Yep, yep. So that's under indicator one.
Anybody have any additional comments or concerns or opposition to acknowledging that on the cover page? Actually, can I piggyback on that?
Sure.
Because this is reflective of last year. So you're fine there, Becky. So moving, dare I even go there? I'm gonna go there. With our move of some of the third grade, the three sections of third grade to the middle school, any, I didn't ask this beforehand, I should, this is something I should have emailed you so that you had good info, so it's okay if you don't have the info. But what does this schedule, the amount of PE opportunities, because we have one gym, and now we have three extra sections in that building, what does that look like going forward? Are we able to maintain that for this year? Are there adjustments made because of space availability? You know where I'm going.
The adjustments, oh, sorry.
I know we talked about this a little bit in your plan, but I can't remember whether the
The adjustments aren't necessarily made because we have the personal fitness room up front, and we also have the gymnasium there. So by utilizing 124, the old kindergarten room, Cindy, as a personal fitness studio as well, and that's working for a personal wellness curriculum, which is part of PE, and then the FIAD room, the gym being used
Gotcha.
Large group activities, which is sometimes combined, sometimes separated, we're able to fit all the sections and maintaining all the scheduled opportunities that are in this report.
Maximizing our resources in the building.
The thing we don't have is anywhere to go if it's indoor recess.
Which doesn't count as those minutes, so.
That never happens.
Ever, never rains.
It never rains.
There we go.
It is not on a report, so.
Now we know, now we know, now we know the true limit of our buildings. We can have FIAD and health.
Yes, ma'am.
We just can't have an incentive. That's because it's 20 below. Got it. Okay, very good.
Take it to the baseball.
All right, are we ready to move on?
Yep, so the next report that we have for you tonight is EL nine Asset Protection Monitoring Report, and we have Janelle Dizarn-Berts, who is going to provide us with the details in that report. And this one is, she's gonna hit the highlights again here. This one had several different indicators underneath it and several subpoints under each indicator, so she will hit the highlights.
So EL nine Asset Protection primarily involves all of our liability insurance and our insurance coverages for the most part, and other ways of our processes, procedures, policies in protecting our assets, both physical, financial, and so forth. Just a couple of the highlights, I guess to go with the, the big one to begin with, under EL nine point two, it says that we will not allow unbonded persons to access funds and excess amounts defined by district insurance policies. We currently do not have bonded employees. It's an extraordinary expense. The last estimate I asked for last week preparing for this report, it was $10,000 annually just for two individuals, and they had to be two select individuals that would handle assets within the district. We do however have, we increased our insurance, our crime insurance actually. So just reading from the report, all employees, including the superintendent, members of the board are covered by a blanket bond, excuse me. The cost of bonding is an extraordinary, last estimated at over $10,000 for two employees. The district did increase the employee dishonesty coverage on the crime policy to $1 million, which is the amount that was indicated by the EL. This would afford coverage for employee theft up to a limit of $1 million with a $10,000 deductible. As always, we do have internal controls. Last year, we implemented a requisition system that's a dual approval process for requisitions, and then in a minute, it'll go through our contract process as well to ensure that all of our expenditures are, have gone through an approval process internally. That's also randomly selected in audit for, for controls and for accuracy purposes. So our auditor will come in and choose, give us a large list of different invoices that we need to bring to him to prove that it's gone through that dual approval or approval process. So those internal controls are there, as well as the insurance amount and the amount that the EL indicated for the bond requirements. So that is that indicator for, for that EL. Some other ELs of interest or indicators of interest under indicator nine point three point two, where we have comprehensive facility use policies and guidelines which govern facility schedule and use. And then also the other facility use ELs that are included in there. Troy does a really great job annually of evaluating the cost of our facility use agreements. So if we charge an organization to come in and use our facilities, we have a checklist of the different requirements in order to be able to use our facilities, including they have to have their own insurance. And then also, he goes through the process of making sure that all of our costs incurred in renting out that, that facility is covered. So he does that on an annual basis. We also, and he and Terry Schumacher go, actually approve and review all of those requests themselves as well. Under facilities, under the asset management for facilities, coming this spring in EL sixteen, Troy is bringing forth the, the Facility Improvement Plan or his Capital Improvement Plan that, that he's been working on and working through as he's been working through the year this year as well. So that's something to stay tuned towards. That was something we also talked about throughout the budget process as well, and talked about how those various facility improvement and capital maintenance projects are included in our operational budget. Another, another area of interest under indicator nine point five point one, and this is where purchases from any vendor that may have had a connection, relationship with an employer, board member of the district have been reviewed by the business office, and any potential conflicts of interest and efforts to mitigate will be documented by the superintendent. And then also throughout the Asset Protection EL report, we talk quite a bit about the process of purchasing something as a district. Like I said, we have our dual approval process for our everyday goods that wouldn't need a contract according to the, the board policies. Anything capital improvement that's $10,000 or more has to go through a competitive bid process. Any individual good or item that's not capital improvement related, that's $25,000 or more has to go through a competitive bid process. And anything over $150,000, no matter what it's, what the contract is, has to go through a sealed bid process. So we did go through those processes for each of those item, individual items that would be over, or contracts that would be over those dollar amounts. Something that we did do last year, in addition to starting, creating the requisition system, that dual approval purchase, purchase system, is the district office created a contract approval process. So each and every contract that would appear on the superintendent's consent agenda has been thoroughly vetted through our office. First and foremost, an administrator who would like to enter, or if the district would like to enter into a contract of any sort, the administrator that's in charge of the project or the purchase has to research and identify any relevant data that supports the need of the requested new cost or contract. Then he or she has to have an implementation plan and timeline, including future benchmarks and dates for the cost or contract evaluation. They must also have a contract or project budget. And then all of those things must be presented to the superintendent, along with if it's under that $150,000 threshold, three competitive bids, if it's over the $150,000 threshold, sealed bid. And then also identify any funding sources. All of those go to the superintendent and then if, under her review, it's approved, it's then placed on the consent agenda as, as necessary by policy. So that's, when we've talked in the past about how it's not easy to get a contract with this district anymore, that is very much true under those requirements. It's something that I know some of the administrators had to go through this last year during the budget process and it, it's timely, it takes some time and it's a lot of work, but it makes sure that we get our best bang for our buck and our best investment possible and it protects our fiscal assets as well as helps us to identify quality contractors and quality goods as well. So that is the contract portion of it. And I think those were the items of interest or discussion over the past year. Also included in this EL are some of the data asset protections. Chet completed this portion of the report and found that all of the indicators were in compliance as well. So, any questions about asset protection?
Kelly? Bill?
Yeah. Going back to 921. Are we gonna be in non-compliance every year because of the way the policy's written?
Yep. So.
So does that mean we need to rewrite that policy?
We'd like to, yes. Well, the indicator or, or the EL actually, we would like to.
That's what I mean.
Or otherwise.
We're gonna be in non-compliance from here on out, the way it's stated now?
Janelle has talked to our insurance broker, or not broker, agent, and she has some recommendations for us if you want to hear that now or how you want to do that, Cindy. But he did, she did ask and said, so here's our EL and he did have some.
So, and that's where the increased insurance, that was the, the primary, obviously that's the catch-all. Then just talking to him, there's really a couple of choices. If you find us to be not in compliance and you would like us to be in compliance, we would have to choose those individuals that we would want to go through the bonding process and it is expensive and it has to be those select individuals that we would want to be bonded. If we, the other option is to change the EL to, to indicate that our insurance and our theft insurance specifically, specifically for employees is always at that increased amount, whatever you choose that threshold to be with the known deductible. So those would be kind of the, the two options then, that as a board you would have to decide if you do want us to go continue with the bonding and then have the, the layer of protection of insurance or insurance, which is what most districts do.
So right now, the, the crime policy or whatever it's called, it's sufficient to cover what we normally would do with bonding then?
Bonding is a little bit different where the individuals go through a very thorough background check and it's actually, it's a lengthy process. So there would be the same recovery of assets by the district under bonding as there would with the insurance policy that he provided with us.
What's the difference in cost between bonding and the insurance policy?
The insurance is $5,000 a year for all employees and bonding for two employees would be $10,000.
We need to do a rewrite.
This is, if you think back to when we went through all of these policies, this one was a big hangup, what was appropriate and we didn't, we left it as that to give Janelle, who was new at that point, the chance to go through and review what we were at, including insurance coverages, including certifications, all that great stuff. So we left it as that, knowing that at some point we would probably have to come back. So guess what? Here we are. So, correct. I mean, we can choose to kick it back to Governance Committee for discussion and, you know, review. That would be the proper way to do that. I mean, the EL report's gonna stand as it is, as not in compliance, but we can choose to review that in governance if we wish.
But if we don't review it and don't change it, we're gonna be in non-compliance every year.
That would be correct.
I can give you the contact information for our insurance broker and he can, if you wanted to bring it back to Governance Committee, and he can answer all those questions as a third party as well.
I'm mixing heads now that we want to do that?
Yep.
Okay. Other questions? Kelly, turn to your.
I turned it back on.
Keeping you on your toes. Mary, do you have anything? Mike?
Yeah, I mean, you're good with everything else.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Yeah, as we've gone through this last year, especially with the new contract process, like I said, I really give kudos to the administrators that stuck it out and worked through the process, especially Becky had some really big ones with the units of study and all the books that she had to purchase. So it, it's not an easy thing to do, but it's really worth it in the end with not just the cost savings, but also the assurance that what we're purchasing is quality.
Julie?
Nothing.
Barb? I don't have anything, except. No, I'm just gonna make myself a note, because if we're gonna kick this one back to Governance Committee, it'll give me a chance to look at it more. 9.7 with intellectual property, and we talked about this one too, is, and I haven't done a side-by-side comparison of the indicators, but how close does that one match one of our other ELs? And I don't know. I'm talking to myself, making myself a note that that's something that I want to look at. So, never mind, moving on.
Write it down in your little book.
I wrote it down in my little book, but all I did is.
Thank you, Janelle.
I better write more. Okay. Thanks, Janelle. Thanks, Becky.
Thanks.
Moving on to Board Action. Oh, I just closed that, I didn't want to. All right. Considering World Language Monitoring Report, this was presented at the last meeting. There's no changes to the report that was submitted. But before we move ahead with a motion on that, do we have any comments that the board would like to indicate on the cover sheet? Nope?
Nope.
Okay. Careful, Mark. Are you calling yourself making reasonable progress?
Yes.
Okay. So the superintendent's box will be marked as making reasonable progress toward results. So I'm entertaining a motion for the board's position with it. Your choices are making reasonable progress, reasonable progress with exceptions noted, or failing to make reasonable progress.
Approval is presented with reasonable progress being made.
Second.
Motion by Kelly, a second by Bill, to accept the E2 Academic Achievement Monitoring Report for World Language as making reasonable progress toward results. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And, okay. All right. Moving on to E2 for Career Tech Ed. Should be marked the same on that one if it's not. Haven't had it open yet. And again, the superintendent's portion of that will be marked as making reasonable progress toward achieving desired results. And does the board have any comments that they'd like to include on that coverage sheet? Okay. Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion and your choices are the same.
I move that we accept Career Technical Education as making reasonable, Monitoring Report is making reasonable progress.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mike, a second by Julie to accept E2 Career for Career Tech Ed as making reasonable progress toward results. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the last one is EL 13 for District Calendar. Like I mentioned before, there is a comment has been added that we had consensus on at the last meeting about the snow days, how we accommodated snow days last year. And I'll entertain a motion as in compliance, not in compliance, or compliance with noted exceptions.
Make a motion that we approve EL 13 District Calendar Monitoring Report as in compliance. Second.
Motion by Julie, a second by Mary, Mary, to accept EL 13 as in compliance. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Those are fun. Moving on to revisions to Board Policy. Again, no changes beyond the changes that were presented at the last meeting. So we'll start with GP 10, Board Member Covenant. This was a reposition of that Page 2 Proposal to Modify Board Policy. At this point, that was the only change to that. It was attached to a different policy previously. So, looking for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve GP 10 Board Member Covenant with a approved change to amend that Page 2.
Second.
Motion by Julie, second by Mike to accept the revised GP 10. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. GP 13, Cost of Governance. Again, no changes to what was presented as proposed, proposed revisions last meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Move we accept GP 13 as revised?
Second.
Motion by Bill, second by Mary to accept GP 13, Cost of Governance, as revised. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to BSR 5. Oh. Oh, no. Oh, there it is. I got it back. All right. And this document is also the same as what was presented at the last board meeting. So I'll entertain a motion.
I move we accept BSR 5 as written, as amended.
Second.
Motion by Mary, a second by Bill to accept the revisions to BSR 5 Superintendent Evaluation. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to Superintendent's Report.
Okay. First thing that we have up tonight is the Launching Forward Update. At our next board meeting, December 10th, the study teams are gonna come forward and with their recommendations. They have been working since July 16th, believe it or not, was our first meeting that we had. It was an organizational meeting and then they have been meeting in their study teams since and they've had regular meetings. And so they are prepared to come forward and all of the work that they have done is on their work team study meetings and they're on the links that I've been providing to the board all along and they're online. And what I am going to ask that you do, and I put it in a memo to you, not this last memo, but the one prior, is I've provided, provided the board with that link and I'm gonna ask that you, and I will send it to you again, but really familiarize yourself with each of the individual team's work so that you kind of have the process that they have gone through, so that when they come with their recommendations, you have that backstory a little bit because their recommendations are gonna be, because there are seven teams and we have a short, not short, but a regular board meeting, so that you kind of know what their process has been and how they have gotten to that recommendation. They're gonna give you a little bit of the history, but not the full history, so you can kind of see the process. So I'm gonna ask that the board kind of familiar, familiarize yourself with the process that they have taken. So I will provide you with each of the links for each of them, so you can just click on it and here will be athletics and co-curriculars, here's their study team plan, so you can see the process that they have taken. That meeting, we would like to possibly start that board meeting a little bit earlier because we still do have board business that we need to take care of. So I'm gonna request that we possibly start a half hour early, 6:30 if that's possible for everybody. So that's something maybe a little bit later we can talk about as well, but I wanted to throw it out there a little bit early to say, we've asked the, the study teams, I put it out there for them too, to say, I think it would be, they can come and they'd be the first thing on the agenda so that they can all present and then they can go and the board could finish with their business, if that's possible. So we're very excited about the work that they have done and the recommendations that they are moving forward. They've, they've really done some great work and really committed and dedicated a lot of time and effort to the, to the work that they have done. So, questions on that? Yes?
No, let's resolve the 6:30.
Okay.
Bill's got a wrestling ref conference or meeting that night. Okay. Well, you were gonna be late anyway, so.
Thanks, Bill.
You're gonna be here?
If I don't go to it, I'm gonna be here on time.
Okay, fantastic.
Awesome. Thanks, Bill.
That meeting doesn't start till 7:00.
Oh, I'm so confused.
He's, he's coming here.
6:30 status? Are we all?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes? 6:30 it is.
Excellent, excellent. All right.
All right.
Okay.
And I think we're all excited to have, yeah, to hear their recommendations and their work and we're ready to meet right away on the 12th. We're already posted for the 12th to review those recommendations and be ready to move back what we can for next steps, so you guys can continue.
I work the planning.
Continue the, the next steps of the action steps, establishing the action steps. And moving forward.
Okay.
With them.
Wonderful.
Shut up now.
Okay. Wanted to give a little bit of an update. I have provided for the board some really wonderful news that we have received about our district credit rating and I gave you some history about that, but I wanted Janelle to be able to provide an opportunity in a, a public setting, if you will, about that. The work that Janelle has really done in the very short time she has been with the district and she kind of provided a little bit tonight in our district asset report, but the work that we have done, and while it has been at times intense and at times maybe frustrating for people, probably more so for Janelle than anybody else, really has paid off. And so I want Janelle to be able to share that with everybody and share in the good news that we have recently received. Janelle?
So just to give a little bit of. A little bit of background, there's, for school districts, there's primarily two different credit, credit rating agencies. There's Standard and Poor or there's. There's Standard and Poor, or there's Moody's. This district has been rated by Moody's going back to 2004. In 2009, this district had an A2 rating in that in 2010, Moody's recalibrated their entire rating scale, and at that time, the district went to a double A3, which is actually two notches above an A2. That was just their recalibration of the market at that time. In 2012, Moody's downgraded the district to an A1, so brought them down to an A1 at the time of debt issuance, which is one notch below the double A3. The downgrowth, according to Carol Worth, who was our financial advisor at the time, the downgrade was primarily driven by fund balance and cash position or liquidity. The sale report presented to the school board, which contained this information, and the Moody's report was filed, and that downgrade happened again in 2012. In 2014, that same rating was reaffirmed again because of the cash position and really the short-term borrowing practices of the district as well. And there has been no change in that rating since 2014. So again, going back to our goals for last year, going into this year, the goals were really to improve the fiscal stability of the district, and one of the indicators of that is our credit rating. If we were able to move the needle a little bit with our fund balance, increasing our fund balance and decreasing our need to short-term borrow on an annual basis, we knew we would see an increase of our credit rating, along with some of our management practices as well. I got a phone call at the end of October from somebody at Moody's saying that they must have the wrong information, because they, our file was red-flagged by Moody's because we didn't short-term borrow this year. And I said, nope, that's actually accurate, we don't have plans to short-term borrow in the near future either. And they were floored, and they reopened our file and did some investigation. We had a credit rating call that happened at the beginning of November, and then on November 7th, got the phone call that they are, increase our credit rating back to the double A3, which is excellent news for the taxpayers of this community and the district as a whole. It's just a symbol of the great work that the entire administrative team and the district as a whole has done over the past year, with us being able to add to fund balance and reduce our need to short-term borrow. It's really been able to allow us to do other things as a district as well. So it's just really great news all the way around. Going back to that double approval requisition system, our contract processes, our staffing processes, and our budgeting processes, all of those things together, along with the other management practices with the new policies and administrative guidelines under Neola. Those were a lot of the indicators to Moody's to give them the ability to increase our credit rating. They had three options at that time, they could either, or a few options actually, they could either maintain our, or they could downgrade us at the time of review. We knew that wasn't going to happen. They could maintain our rating, they could give us a positive rating, meaning that we're doing great things, but they want to see it continue at least for another year, or they can upgrade our rating, and they said with the amount of changes that we've made in a short amount of time, that they felt comfortable giving us an increase in our rating. And then also the continual expansion of our tax base and our increasing, the growth of the district as a whole were other indicators for them that they were able to increase our credit rating. So some good news. Any questions at all?
Could you maybe give an example, if I'm a taxpayer tuning in tonight, how this is good for me, just speaking as a taxpayer?
As a taxpayer, I think Cindy had referenced this a couple of meetings ago too, that just in your own personal lives, you know that if you're making great decisions with your own financial wealth, that your credit rating follows that as well. So it's, obviously, it's just an indicator of how we're doing financially as a district. Another thing is anytime we go to borrow for any specific reasons, specifically if we ever sell bonds as a district, now that we have an increased credit rating, it's going to give us a greater ability to be able to borrow at a lower interest rate or to be at a more competitive rate. So it's really great news for the taxpayers in general, and also the community as a whole, that we are doing great things financially as a district, and then we'll be able to be able, continue doing those things in the future as well with the increased credit rating.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, thanks, Janelle. Thanks, Janelle. Okay, I also wanted to give you an update, because you probably have heard or will be hearing about some additional reports that you are going to receive next week, or next week, at the next board meeting. So along with the Department of Justice Security Grants, as you have heard all along, there are requirements with those. But there has also been some requirements that came with Act 143, and so with that, along with those, we have to give some reports to the board. And so we're trying to figure out where we're going to give those reports, because they're yearly basis reports. And so in working with Troy and Chet, because Chet is also along with the Department of Justice Grants and the Act 143, which is security, and Troy being our security coordinator for the district, we've decided that we're going to do that in December, which probably was a bad choice, because now the December 10th meeting is also the launch one, but we have yearly requirements that we have to do some updates to the board. So we want to give you a little bit of heads up of what's coming your way. And so Troy is going to give us a little bit of an update about what some of those drills that you might be hearing about that are happening in the buildings, based on the Department of Justice Security Grant requirements, and some facility assessments that are also part of Act 143 requirements. So if you would, Troy?
Yeah, so with the grants that we received through the Department of Justice, we have a specific set of trainings that need to be done for staff. We have to, we have to establish a sits team or a, I gotta bring it up, sorry. I can't remember what the.
School Intervention Team.
Yeah, an intervention team. And that, we've decided to go district-wide as a sits team and establish, or and do training on some mental health stuff that a lot of the staff will have to be taking. With the DOJ grant, the, the, I'm sorry, my mind is. The DOJ grant requires us to come up with these teams that have to be done by, no later than 2020. When we applied for the grant, those were prerequisites. With Act 143, through the Office of School Safety, we have to do at least one safety and security drill every year. We're starting those drills this week, which we sent out a memo to parents through Infinite Campus, letting them know that we would be doing these drills this week. We actually did our elementary school one today, and it was very successful. We did find specific things that we need to improve on, but it was a very short list of things. Also with Act 143, we need to do a security assessment of all three facilities. That assessment will be something that will have to be reported to you guys, not necessarily given to the Department of Justice. So in working with local law enforcement, we will be going through and making this assessment on walkthroughs on everything from interior climate of the school to door practices as far as if the doors are unlocked during the beginning of the school day or immediately after having somebody staffed at those doors. And then you go through and do an outside walkthrough, looking at things like, are there places for somebody to hide? Are there exterior doors in an unlocked position during the school day? And then you look at all the athletic fields, and you do an assessment on those as far as safety and security. Anything that is a part of a school facility, we have to do an assessment on. And that has been coordinated with Columbus Police Department. Officer Ward has been our contact for that and has been very easy to work with. It's something that honestly is going to improve the safety of our school district as a whole, but it's actually something that we would like to expand upon, just to make sure that it's not just a one-shot deal that we have to do to satisfy the DOJ, but something that we want to do to ensure the safety of our students and staff. Any questions?
So, I just want to ask, so the elementary school, we're going to redo the front somewhat?
We did receive the second round of grants for doing a secured entrance at the elementary school. We're doing some investigation into how best to make that work, because it is kind of a difficult layout.
Sure. Okay, good, good.
Charlie, Julie?
When you had the drill today for the elementary, how did you address the children? And how did you address, I mean, what went down? I mean, was it, you know, you said that somebody, is it a lockdown?
So the procedure was that Beth got on the intercom and specifically said, this is a drill, you know?
Why don't you have Beth go ahead and talk about, from beginning to end, everything that you?
Yeah, there's a lot that goes behind before the drill actually happens. So in the very beginning, I sent out like a correspondence to the teachers. I let them know exactly when it was going to happen, what they needed to expect, don't forget to grab this, grab that, you know, all that kind of information. And then this morning, just to prepare the kids, we did send the correspondence out to the families beforehand, but maybe they didn't get it, you know, so we had to make sure that the kids were ready. I have my all-school morning meeting, which is Skyped in, so they can see me, and I had my counselor right next to me, and I explained to them, you know, we have fire drills, and we have tornado drills. Today, we're going to have a different kind of drill, it's called a lockdown, and here's why you might have to do that. And I gave actually the example of what we had last year, when, you know, the police called us and said, you know what, the schools aren't in any trouble, but we just want to keep everybody safe, just as precaution, we're going to have you go on, or suggest you to go on a lockdown. So I gave that example of, you know, sometimes the police ask us to do this just so they can keep us safe, and I left it at that. And then I said, you know, to the teachers, you're going to want to follow up in small group, because I'm, you know, speaking to 300 and some odd kids, I can't level up by, you know, a five-year-old to a third grader. So then the teachers followed up with them after that. Right at 9:30, in my, you know, as calm voice as I can, this is a lockdown. And they knew I was coming around, they knew, they'd hear the jingling of the doors, they were prepared with all of that. The drill lasted about six minutes, because we can walk pretty quickly through my building. And just as we expected, the kids were absolutely silent, which was, my teachers are amazing. So you know, they kept 300 and some odd little ones silent. And then when it was finished, I again said, hey, good job, everyone was really quiet, the lockdown drill is over. And then after that, the teachers said, do you understand how, you know, that was? It was easy, it was simple, everybody is safe, that's why we practice these. And they moved about their day, and our counselor was available, but was never used, which is good. I mean, it was good that she, you know, stood there with me in the morning meetings, they knew that she was there and available, but didn't need to be used in that aspect, so, yeah.
We did send out a communication to parents also afterwards, just letting them know, you know, this is what the drill consisted of, and gave them actual links to talking points on if their child came home and had a bunch of questions, that they could reference those links and how to, how to address the child's questions.
And as part of the new Act 143, the administrators, when they do these drills, now have to write a summary report of how the drill went, when it was, all of that information. And they will have to submit that report then at the end of the, well, actually, within 30 days. That report has to come to the board. So you will see the reports, so that you will know how each of the drills went. So that's a new part of that Act 143. We're just now, you know, you're probably wondering, so why are we getting all these drills in December? We're just now getting the details of what the state wants in the reports, and how they want it all to them. So we're just getting the information about what it should look like. Just like the DOJ, you know, how we should submit the requirements. So we got all the requirements, but we're still now just getting the information of what and how we need to submit everything. So we're kind of trying to get everything at the end of the year, is basically what we're doing.
So we can expect all the requirements to change in January?
We're hoping not, but we're going to do what they're asking us to do right now.
Questions, Mary, Bill, Kelly?
Well, I guess just to follow up Barb's question, I'm really glad to hear that you had all this preparation, and you probably had heard about another district that had a drill without letting anybody know, which, you know, you can sort of see their rationale, but apparently it was really, really difficult for the kids, and it sounds like you really handled it well, so thank you for that.
I'd like to acknowledge our relationship with the police department, and frankly, the sheriff's department, just over the last couple of years, there's been a lot of increased expectations when it comes to school security. A lot of work been done with transportation, making sure that went well. But they've really been supportive and stepped up on in-service training on different issues, planning our facilities, they're, I think, more familiar now with our facilities, the limitations of them than they have been in the past. And they sure seem to be really interested in having that positive relationship. So if there's ever an incident, everybody's on the same page and knows what to do. I know when you started last year, you did a lot of work with just reviewing our procedures on everything, and they were an integral part of that as well. So I think it's appropriate at this point to say thank you to them, and please extend our thanks, because they've.
Absolutely, the assessment part is a lot of time for them, because you don't just, you know, do a tour and say, oh, hey, everything looks great, you know? I mean, there's a 16-page report that goes along with it, so, yeah, it's a lot of time.
Awesome. Great, okay, thanks, Troy.
Thank you, Troy. And finally, some human resources items. So there's a limited-term contract on the consent agenda for tonight for Columbus High School Science Teacher Ryan Milton. Had an explanation in the board packet in regards to Ryan, so when Ryan began at the beginning of the year, he was still in the process of retraining his license, and he now has that, so we can extend that limited-term contract to him. And finally, the Fall Staffing Report, which was originally due on November 30th. They've extended the deadline to December 10th. Pam puts a lot of time and effort into the Fall Staffing Report, it's referred to as PI 1202. We use the Fall Staffing Report for lots of things. We found out today, we use it for another report that is due on November 30th. And another report that Pam was busy working on today. But I provided some information in the board packet for you to understand what the Fall Staffing Report is. We really use it to identify basically demographics of our staff and qualifications of our staff, licensing included within that. Because we have two schools that are Title I schools, we have to make sure that we have highly qualified teachers in our schools. highly qualified teachers in our schools. If we do not have highly qualified teachers that are teaching, we do have to, for a certain period of time, so if there's more than four weeks that we do not have highly qualified teachers teaching, we do have to let our parents know. So if they're not licensed within the content areas that they're teaching, so if we assign somebody that isn't licensed in that area within a certain amount of time, we do have to write letters to our parents and let them know that we do not have highly qualified teachers or support staff that required the license in those areas teaching. And that's not a good thing to do. So this staffing report is very important, and that's why when we assign teachers and have to reassign teachers and we work really hard to make sure that we have licensed teachers in the areas that we have them in, this is why it's so important. And this report is so important. So I know that there are a couple of people that Pam was really on to make sure that they were meeting their license requirements and getting this done. And so we are happy to report that we have zero errors on our fall staff report. And so that is my superintendent's report.
Any questions for Annette? Hearing none, we'll move on to our consent agendas. I'll entertain a motion for the superintendent's consent agenda.
Sorry?
Motion by Kelly, second by Bill to accept the superintendent's consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion on the board consent agenda.
Second up?
Motion by Kelly, a second by Bill to accept the board consent agenda as, as posted. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to board management. We have one event to report out on. And Bill, Julie and I attended the Boardman Clark Legal Seminar. So Bill, do you want to take a second to talk about what you did, value of that?
Well, this is the second year I've gone to the Boardman and Clark's meeting. And just like last year, this year, they presented a lot of really good information for us. Some things I hadn't thought of, some things I had to go up and talk to the lawyer that was in charge of, which happened to be Rick at the time because it was his topic. But things that the board normally doesn't consider, legal ramifications of running a school district.
I consider those.
Yeah, but you're a lawyer.
If you go to two more of the seminars, you're eligible to join the State Bar as well.
You might got to pass a test, don't you? But it was well worth spending the day there. I guess that's the easiest way to say it.
Julie?
This was my first time attending, and I did think that it was well worth it. It was really well put on. They had some really excellent speakers who were clearly experts in their area. It was a little dry, nothing personal, Kelly. The whole thing was just a little on the dry side, but it was good. And it was all kinds of things, you know, as you commented, where I just really never thought about the ramifications of some of those aspects and some of the, you know, we attended a couple on sexual harassment, one involving staff, one involving students, and just looking at the whole picture of what that involves and what that means for a district. And I just hadn't really thought in that parameter before. So I think it was really helpful and really beneficial and well put on.
Ditto. You know, the reminder, it went last year, and my comment was, you know, be prepared for brain overload because it's a lot of examples of situations occurring across the country, things that are running through the court system, challenging various things and making change and what they're responding to. But right down to open records, record retention really is more of it. We have requirements for keeping certain student, certain student records forever, certain student records until they graduate, certain staff records. But then we live in this digital world now where stuff is on the cloud, stuff is on servers. So what is your record? Where you keep certain things for a certain amount of times, but that conflicts with this? And what is their analysis of that? When is a video camera a record? And when is it just a recording? When does it become a record? And when is it protected student information? It's really interesting conversation. And a reminder that if you get the legal response to your question today, tomorrow their legal response and recommendation could be very different based on something that's going on. So that's interesting. The other thing that stuck out to me is this change in, that they're seeing in how improvement plans are used, that public entities are going more toward the private sector philosophy on how to use improvement plans for staff, not only to be what can you, what do we need you to do as an employee to be a better employee, but also what is our agreement? I understand as a manager what your goals are professionally and what do we need to do to work on to help you move forward? It's kind of a new concept in the public sector. Was a very interesting conversation on how that is playing out in the world of performance evaluations. So, good stuff. The great thing about going to that is it gives you a really big binder. So you get the presentations for the sessions that you weren't able to attend. If you want to read a, you know, big legal briefing on eight different topics, they actually give you that, which is pretty...
But Cindy, they also give you this little bitty thumb drive that's got all that stuff in the binder.
They give you a little flash drive, too.
And Cindy and I managed to cross paths a little bit because we both picked up a thumb drive and we both gave them to Annette because she was unable to make it and... So she's got twice the information we got.
I will say, it was a very well documented course. I've been to CME and it's not even close. I mean, I had the PowerPoint, I had the outline, and then I had the text of the entire presentation for every single presentation. If you had any question about content, there it was. It was impressive. It was a lot of paper.
So, awesome. All right, at this point, we will, administrators are free to go. The board's got a couple of calendar planning things and we'll do our debriefing before we adjourn. So, thanks, everybody.